Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Floss. I'm the Liaison Officer for CAL FIRE in the map to Team 1. And I want to start by telling you it's been our privilege serving you these past couple of weeks on this tragedy that has occurred in the area. We're here tonight to provide a briefing, a historical look back from the fire from the beginning, and tell you where it's at now, and offer you some other information. I want to start off with introducing CAL FIRE Tualamooka Calabres Division Chief Josh White. Division Chief Roy Evans. Incident Commander Fulton Harris from incident management team. Incident Commander Training Stephen Shaw. From Amador, Colorado Unit, Division Chief Chris Post. Also from Amador, Colorado, Team Chief Mike Oliveria. I am Team 1 Operations Section Chief Tony Brown. Law Liaison Officer Lieutenant Scott Black. Incident Information Officer Mike Baller. Over here at your left, key cooperators from local government, Sheriff Gary Coons. From California Highway Control, Lieutenant Dewayne Lewis. Local government partners, Jim Carroll from West Point. Ron Young from Santa Clara. Steve Kovacs from northeast. Lee Warroh from Alphaville, Alphaville County. Michael Johnson from Evans Pass. Now I'll turn over to... I'm sorry. Jeff Stone. Central California. So at this time, I'd like to hand it off to Mike Baller as the Information Officer. He'll be the MC for the map of the world. Thanks, Chief. Good evening, everyone. We'll get started here. We're going to go right into our initial attack. Incident Commander Chief Mike Oliveria.
Good evening, Mike Oliveria, CAL FIRE in Amador, Colorado Unit. So I was the initial attack incident commander. And I'm just going to briefly describe the events that took place at the beginning of the fire. And if we have any specific questions for me, there will be around half the work to handle. So we were dispatched about 2:30, heading around to the fire. As I came around Vista Point there, Jackson is what I saw the smoke for the first time. It was a moderate smoke. It appeared to have a, you know, real very quick way to spread. As I went on scene, I realized it had about four acres of fire. And it was burning from Houghton Mount Road to Chairman Hoover Ranch. And we were able to get some equipment in there. And we picked up the fire on Chairman Hoover Ranch Road at about four acres. However, the fire is only spot fire about halfway down into the Colmen River. So that being what it is, you know, that's kind of a bigger, larger task to take care of once it does that. We ordered, I made a pretty substantial request for equipment, including engines, crews, and dozers, and aircraft to handle that, you know, expanding event. I moved around to a point where I could see it. And the fire behavior for the, with the fire in the canyon was what you would expect it to be. Slow runs from the mid-slope part of the canyon up towards the top. We were protecting structures and putting line in at the top of the canyons. And we're starting to work down the flank of the canyon in time to fire into the Colmen River. Things are going well. At about 5:00 to 5:30, the up canyon or the diagonal wind subsided and the north wind surfaced. It pushed, the fire made a little run from about mid-slope down towards the electric powerhouse. When it made that run, the fire had spotted over into Calabres County. At that point, we made another substantial resource request to Tualamooka Calabres Unit, which again included additional aircraft, dozers, crews, and engines. It probably, from the time we first saw the spot, I would say it was probably 10 minutes before I get to the top of the ridge. When I initially saw the spot, we immediately made an evacuation request to Calabres County SO. Talking to my partner, they responded extremely quickly. They got there within 10 minutes and started evacuating down from Delmarie area. And we also requested Highway 26, a mile east of, and a mile west of Delmarie. Once our equipment got on scene, we established that as an additional branch to the fire. And I'll let Division Chief Chief Chris Post describe the rest. At that point, we handed off the IC to him, and I took the operations department. Thank you.
Good evening. Tony Brown, LSU, Mission Team 1 Operations. And operations means that I was running, the firefighting operations turned today on the ground, and Mike was running at night. So I was thinking we got here, that first day was already across the river. It was going into Highway 26. It was about 200 acres on his other side of 26. So when the sun, it burned pretty active all night. When the sun came up, it actually, you know, obviously is going to pick up a lot of that. But at the point here, some of the prediction I've seen it was burning over 50 acres a minute. So about 11 o'clock, it was across Highway 26. It was making an active run to Haces Maria. By later that day, it was already down here in the mountain, above Mountain Ranch area. The next day was all the way around Mountain Ranch. And that's where the foretale was down on the bottom down there. Extreme fire behavior. So it was very difficult to get in front of it. We were worried about people out there, obviously. At one point, our firefighting aircraft were actually dropping on people trying to get away down the fire. So it was a very difficult fire. Today, we're concentrating on ways, way funding up our fire line, making sure it's all bop, it's called bop up. It means we're putting all the hot spots out around the perimeter, about 300 to 400 feet in. If you see all the brown spots on there, those are what we call big islands. They're areas that are partially burned or not burned at all. It's taught a lot of heat there. And that's why you guys are seeing a lot of smoke popping up every once in a while out there. We're actually going in and getting those things all put out. We're working around the houses, making sure the houses are all safe for repopulation after a while time. Because obviously, the trees are weakened. There's areas we call stump holes, which basically is a fire burning at the ground where the stump creep system is. Today, we actually had an incident where firefighters stepped in a stump hole. It means it's burning it now. So those are some of the things you guys got to work about. We talked about when we do repopulation there. Really be careful around your house because the dangers are still there. Okay? And I'm going to introduce to Scott Black. He's going to come up. We're going to talk a little bit about the evacuations and how we did the evacuations and how we got you guys back in before we repopulated the area.
Hi, good morning. My name is Scott Black. I'm the law enforcement liaison for Team 1. Talk about the process for evacuations. I work closely with, very closely integrated with CHP, with Calabres sheriffs, Amador sheriffs, state parks, all the law enforcement around here. Thank them for giving you a house. They did a wonderful job. And we work closely with operations and the incident commanders to decide when people are going to get evacuated. We look at decision points of the fire. Here we're going to go and advise you for the evacuation. If it gets here, we're going to go mandatory evacuation. And these guys start getting busy and start getting people out of there. It's all about your safety. Goes through a long checklist to make sure it's safe. When we get back into repopulation, again, it's all about your safety. We want to get you back in as soon as we possibly can. We know you want to get back in sooner than we let you in. We realize that. But it's all about your safety. Like Chief Brownell was saying, we want to make sure there's no trees that are going to fall down on you. We want to ensure there's not live wires out there. We want to make sure there's not stump holes and all this kind of stuff. So we go through a long checklist through law enforcement, fire, utilities, EOCs, help to make sure it's safe and get back in there. And that's how we start to send you back in. I'll go back to Tony Seaton to kind of tell you how.
Early on in the incident, we did something called embedding. So riding with me, as I was on the incident, I had a sergeant with me from the Calabres Fire Department, Calabres Police Department. So I'm from out of the area, so knowing that area there was, you know, I had to burn the area real quick. But with him and my vehicle, we have a couple of decision points. So the fire gets to a certain spot, we say we're going to evacuate this area. The fire gets to there, we're going to evacuate that area. And the first couple of days of the fire was actually burning in so many different directions. By the time we figured out what our decision point was, it was already hitting. So we have to give the law enforcement officers enough time to get in and get you out. And obviously, law enforcement is not trained in firefighting. So we're putting them out ahead of the fire, which is very dangerous. So we got to give them enough time till they get enough people in place to get you guys out. Unfortunately, I know some people didn't get the word, you know, to the reverse time resistance from Lurie County, so we had the options out there with them. And one of the difficulties we had, and a big part of the fires, people weren't getting the words and we were having to go in there and get them out. And it was very challenging. But once we got to that point, the fire started slowing down, we really made enough to get you guys back in your house. We know it's huge inconvenience for you guys to be away from home. The whole question is, my house still there? My house is still there. So we tried to work with utilities, all the other companies out there. We sent fire agents around every house, make sure it's safe to get back in, drop any trees that we're concerned about. And then we were able to repopulate the area, like with those maps back, you'll see kind of areas where we didn't, we had to try to do it chance because we have a 71,000 acre fire. That's a lot of area to cover. So it was a little bit difficult to help we get the best we can for you. And we'll go off from there. And we don't talk about fire victims. We talk about fire survivors. You measure it.
Thank you. Just be careful still. Thank you, Chief, Lieutenant. All right, now you have to listen to me. My name is Mike Baller. I'm actually the Incident Information Officer for Team 1. I'm kind of giving you an idea of how information flows in an incident like this, very dynamic incident. To me, information is very important because it's my job and I think it's very important. And our title is Public Information Officer. Is the media our ally? Absolutely. But the public is who we serve with information. It's you. It's getting you information that is in a timely fashion, but it's accurate. So I kind of want to give you an overview of how information flows on an incident like this because we get a lot of calls, we need information, you know, right now or what's going on. So how it works is we have our day operations and our night operations. So let's say night operations, they come in early in the morning, they give us information. And technically, they give us intelligence, intel. And what we do with that is we glean information on that acre, containment, evacuations, areas that are threatened. We take that, we put it on what we call the fact sheet, and we email that. We put it out to the press, we put it on the radio. And that happens twice a day because the day operations goes out. They come in, they report that information, and then again, we glean that intel. We turn it into information that's accurate and disseminated to you in a timely manner. That way, we make sure that you know the exact acre, containment, evacuations. Now, if an evacuation order changes, if we have something that needs to get out immediately, you know, a repopulation area, that's a news advisory. We send that out immediately because the fire is changing. But we have to make sure we give you the most accurate information. I can tell you on this fire that it moves so quick that we work with operations, we work with our law enforcement partners. If you look at our information section, we literally are embedded with law enforcement and operations to make sure that we are giving you the most current, accurate information. There were several things that happened on this fire. Loss of power, loss of connectivity. We live in a world where information is instantaneous. One of the things that we have to sort through and a lot of what we deal with is social media, third-party information. There's nothing wrong with that, but what I ask you is, if you're not getting it from the incident, you have to look at the source that it's coming from. Now, again, there's Facebook, there's Twitter, there's, you know, there's Instagram. But where is that information coming from? And what happens is that rumor starts. So about 40% of that is dealing with accurate information. Do we use that? Absolutely, we do. But remember the sources that you look at. It's very important that we don't start that, that we control it, and we get it out to you. I tell people I have the easiest job, I shouldn't say the easiest, I have the best job and I have the hardest job. Because I get to, and all these information officers that are in the back, that have been out in the community since this fire started, and some of you have probably had contact with them, they go door to door. They go out in the community and give you that information. And I get to interact with the community along with them. The hardest part is, we're going to be here after this incident leaves through the recovery stage, so I'll probably meet a lot of you. And then I'm going to have to walk away from this community and go back to Southern California, where I'm from, after I've built all these relationships. So that's probably the hardest part. When we have an incident like this, we form what we call trap lines. These are areas and communities where people gather. It could be the lookout, where a lot of people go to see the canyon that's on fire. It could be the local supermarket. It could be the local coffee shop. If you've been out, we had 22 different trap lines in both counties with, I would say, 20, 25 PIOs every day out there putting a new map, a new fact sheet there to talk to the community. That was one of our best ways to get information out there. Not only did we do that, but we were making sure that we were at the evacuation centers to get out there and see the people affected, you, getting you timely, accurate information. That is our job. And right now, our information officers are still engaged. We moved into what we call the recovery portion. Okay, we get you the information, but now the information we need to get to you is maybe a contact for some type of recovery. You know, we work very closely with the county, with all the law enforcement, county emergency operations centers, and getting that information out to you. We're going to do several community meetings. We'll make sure that's out. We'll be working with Chief White and the unit here. I was wondering, the attendance here, would either, me from Southern California, is there's a little rivalry between Angels Camp and a high school over in Santa Clara. So maybe people that come over here for that, I don't know. So we're going to do one out that way too. But I want to make sure that you know that information, we take it very, very seriously. It's something we try to get to you as quick as possible so you can make a decision as a, as the public, what you should do and that it's accurate. And what I'd like to do at this point is, we're going to have some questions. Chief over there's got the microphone. What I'd like to do is, we're going to field several questions, but I want you to know that we're going to stay after. The executive staff, the fire chiefs here, law enforcement will be here tonight to answer every question until we're done. But if you have a question that you think everybody needs to hear, please go up there. He's got a microphone, so if you want. And we'll get it to the right person.
Yes, every day I came out and I got the incident report. I'm from the Calabres Animal Disaster Shelter. And there was a noticeable hole in that disaster reporting. You had all the evacuation centers, the Red Cross evacuation centers in that report. And you also had information on where people could take livestock. However, the big hole that I found is there was no place to take pets, dogs, and cats. And Red Cross shelters don't take animals unless they're service animals. So a lot of people didn't know what to do with their animals. And I was just curious why that information about pets was wrong.
Well, that's something we need to, again, work with the county emergency operations center. And I, and for our fact sheet, if that's something that we need to look at, absolutely, we would make, as far as animal control, using the county, that's something that should have been on our fact sheet. I know we did have the large animal rescue areas, but that's something we have to look into because we did refer to the county, but we needed something for smaller animals. We will definitely look into that now. Thank you.
Jim, we're going to look around here because there are spokes all the way across the line.
Can we get on a lot of the roads that they're not supposed to be on to get back to our house? And one of the amazing things that I saw is the bulldozers work that they've done to do the backstops and all that. But more important than that is PG&E people. And I don't see that there's any PG&E people here, but I mean, they're doing just an absolute...
We do have a red button, actually, ma'am, but go ahead and answer some questions.
I mean, we personally have electricity. Other people that are very near us do it, but I know they're busting their butts. And I personally really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'd like to bring comment, if you look here, CAL FIRE executive staff, executive law enforcement, all of our fire chiefs here, and our cooperators for utilities. It really, really is a cooperative effort to make, unfortunately, a large disaster come together. So thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. My boyfriend had left our home. He was born in the back bedroom, but we appreciate everything he's done and we know you've worked very hard. So thank you to everyone.
Again, if you want to say thank you. I just noticed in the beginning, there was some inconsistencies. It seemed like different people had other information. The sheriff's department said, all this road is open. You go out there, notice closed. You know, the dispatcher. I guess there's about six people that can actually close a road, PG&E, you know, the highway patrol. And it didn't seem like there's someone that was in charge of that, that could be, you know, a focal point where we could go and find out what was really true. Because you had people coming up from the valley and you had sheriffs there with guns because they knew they were going to come across some hot residents there.
Yeah, I'll address that. As the chiefs have said, this thing happened so quick and unpredictable. So between the sheriff's department and the highway patrol, we're out there, we're trying to shut down the road, we're trying to make people safe, we're trying to do the evacuations. So I totally agree with you. The first day or so, there was a little disconnect there. But eventually, once the sheriff's department's emergency operations section got going, one of our sergeants was embedded into there, providing us time for the information. I was at the command post out here at the fairgrounds, both in Amador and here where they moved over here. And then the information started flowing a lot better. So we do after-action reports. We look at these issues and concerns so we can do better next time. But the only thing I can tell you is, I, I'll tell you, I became a police officer because I hate fire. I mean, what these guys do is incredible. So I run from it, they run to it. So, and I know that it's just, at the initial onset of these major incidents, whether it's a fire, it's a hurricane, it's a flood, there's a lot of resources coming in. Everybody finally gets connected up. And we try to get that information, as PIOs said, we're trying to get the information out to you. And I know my officer at our office posted on Facebook, on our Facebook page, the sheriff's department sending out NICSOL alerts on the evacuations, but that did take a couple of days. So I'm not sure if you're talking longer term or just right...
Longer term, actually, even in the office, with fire, that there's still some inconsistency between the agencies that was going on there. And Mike, there's a two, it's also between the counties. There was some inexperience between the counties to get this whole thing going. I'm interested, there's some politics that I think we just need to step back and look, what happened here? How could we stop this from happening next time?
We'll do that. I'll pop you afterwards and get some information, like say, act to a full action, after-action report, and the sheriff's department does that. And so I would be very interested in being able to address that. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yes, this addresses the CAL FIRE webpage. They followed it quite closely all through the incident, lived in Mountain Ranch. And what I noticed was that the closure information was correct when they closed the road, but it wasn't, they didn't necessarily indicate when they opened. A lot of cases, the only time you could find, where you could find out if the road was open to go and see if you managed to roll by, then it was closed. But major, it was reported as closed on the webpage for several days after it opened.
That's a great question. And I'll chime in to what the lieutenant said. After the road closures, we don't only close them for the emergency and they move. And like Lieutenant said, we sat with all of our law enforcement partners. Those move. It may be a utility, it may be because of the fire, it may be because of infrastructure. So those move. We ask you during these, this very dynamic situation, you can see, this is 70,000 acre fire that moved at some points 70 feet a minute. We had to adjust those. Our job, I can tell you, and it falls on me, is public information is getting you that accurate information in a timely manner. But we have to ask you for your patience because we are trying to do that as quick as possible with our law enforcement partners, our local government cooperators, to get that out to you. And that's a great question, sir. We update them as soon as we can to make sure that you're safe. So we ask you for your patience and it's something that we work on and continually improve.
I know that many of us who were evacuated left town and spent all of that, all those many days in friends or relatives' homes. And I guess we picked the wrong one because we had no communication whatsoever. Couldn't use a computer. And we weren't getting any news reports. The news stations did a very poor job covering the new fire. Once the valley fire started, they were forgetting us. So we weren't getting much information. And I can check up like a hotline when there's a fire where we can call. You don't find out exactly what's going on at the minute. But other than that, if you all get a call, it's a joke.
Thank you, ma'am. And to answer the question, you're absolutely right. And Chief White, you know, man, this is a KBGC, the radio station, was absolutely amazing. Jim Keeney, is that right? But Jim, anyways, KBGC was very, very instrumental. And I agree with you, ma'am. We did actually do have a hotline that was open. And we actually, for the first time, grabbed that hotline and put it in the command post. And tonight, it's still open and we will start far with you. We actually have the contact. We are going to keep that line open, but that's something that we need to get out to you quicker. We did have a hotline, but you obviously didn't have the number. And it's something that we have to look at. So what I'd like to do is, I'm going to take two more questions because we have some closing comments, and then we will be available after. All of the executive staff, local government, and law enforcement will be here to answer your questions. So go ahead, sir.
My question is addressing the sheriff's department. I live up on Haces Maria Road. And during the beginning of the, I had not one single sheriff come by. The only reason I knew what was going on is the neighbors. And I'm kind of curious as to why there wasn't anything going on with the sheriff's department there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Anthony Abarth, CAL FIRE Sheriff's Office. I'm not quite sure, are you referring to days after the evacuation or...
No, on Thursday, I left myself, Thursday about 1:30. You know, I think it started on a Wednesday afternoon and just watching what was going on. There was, I mean, literally not one sheriff car that went by up on the road at that time.
Well, first I'd like to explain how our county works. This evacuation actually existed on Highway 4 to Highway 26. It's quite a bit of area, right? We started the night with the fire with four personnel on. We only had four. So when this happened and the fire started breaking out, evacuations had to take place. We only had four guys on to start the evacuation process. We started notifying mutual aid, and as our mutual aid sources started coming, we started dispatching to certain locations where we got updated with how fire devices where the evacuation areas go. Those had our priority. We tried getting in front of this fire. Like Chief said earlier, this fire was moving 70 feet per minute. Our roads don't go, you know, Street 1 through Street, you know, 100, then A through Z. So it was one of those things where we did everything we can with mutual aid by assigning up certain roads and tagging it. I guarantee you, Haces Maria was hacked. Come on, sir. Regarding attacks, we personally go door to door. We have to send a deputy car up into your neighborhood, up your driveway. It's actually not going to be hard to verify that if somebody's home. Once we get the verification that somebody's home or it's not home, we tag the house. We usually tag it with some kind of parking tape, and then we proceed to the next one. As for Thursday, without knowing the exact time and actually having all the record keeping, I wouldn't know exactly what time Haces Maria got, actually got back there. We personally drove up those roads.
What happened to the reverse 911? I called CD, and I gave them my address, 15651 on Rose Way. They wanted for a mandatory evacuation. No, you're not. And when you are, we will reverse 911 on the call. I said, oh, for the day.
So we waited until we almost got there.
Thursday afternoon, I left the plane, burning my mother's house. And nobody came.
Well, when I, when I'm speaking of reverse 911, it's a system the county has, which we have to physically type in the address system.
It was CAL FIRE that told me that. I'm a sheriff's office.
I'm not going to speak to CAL FIRE. They're, I don't believe CAL FIRE utilizes reverse 911.
No, when they said that you would be notified by reverse 911...
No, when they said that you would be notified by reverse 911 from the Sheriff's Office. So, it's a communication. So, again, this is one of those things that we'll go back, we'll be working with the Sheriff's Office to review the system and find out what we can improve upon. What we identified early is that when those power lines came down, the telephone lines were... Somebody still has power, and you still have access. I understand, I'm not talking about your specific situation, because unfortunately, I don't know. But, what we're going to do is try to identify, because the NICSIL system is one that the Sheriff's Office uses, and it's something that we can discuss afterwards, and be able to share the information. But the NICSIL seems to work really well in most areas that have cellular service. That's one of the problems with NICSIL. If you have cellular service in there, it's a good system. And everybody in Calaveras should sign up for the NICSIL service.
There's no cell service in Calaveras County.
I know it's very...
I just, I have a couple of questions, actually, regarding the percentage of areas that remain unpopulated, if there are any, I'm not aware. And how many roads, if any, are still closed? And then, for the next few weeks, what the timeframe is for cleanup, what that's going to look like? And any dangers that we should be aware of? Like, you know, mudslides, if there's rain, things like that, what should we be prepared for and careful of?
All right, I'll fill this one if nobody finds. Do you want to jump up? No? Okay, I got it. Okay, to answer your first question, the entire area is repopulated. All of the roads are open, but we have a lot of utility work going on. So, PG&E is working feverishly right now. They had over 50, they identified over 15,000 trees that they would have to take down because of the fire damage, and that they knew immediately would come in contact with, or potentially come in contact with those power lines. So, they're working to restore power, to get those power lines up. I think, Mr. Reeves, was it 680 poles that had to be replaced? Somewhere in that number? 900. 900 poles for them to replace. And that includes some of the transmission lines that were down out of the lifetime. So, they have a lot of work to do. In the future, when we start talking about rains, we all know what we are going to have to all definitely be aware of the potential for the mudslides and that rain wash-off. So, this is going to be a long-term awareness for us as we go through and recover. Does that answer everything? It was multi-question, sorry. And we refer, so the question is, how long for us to continue Mamba or completing up all of the hotspots? And that's really probably going to be going on throughout the rest of the season until we get rains. We're going to have local, we're holding on to a lot of resources for as long as we can. But you're going to see the local, Tony Calaveras Unit personnel going out, continuing to smother those smokes up. We'll be tasking some of our local government friends to come out and help us from time to time if we need to. But that's one of the benefits of repopulation, is that once people get back in, Calaveras is resilient. So, I know that a lot of the times, somebody might see a smoke and go take a little cup of water and dump it on the foreground. But on the same token, it also puts the eyes and ears out there for us to be able to find those smokes. Call us up, let us know where the, what the address is. We're doing that constantly right now, to identify those smokes. We'll come up and take care of them. Let's do a couple more questions, if you don't mind.
It's concerning trees, how to identify, who do we get in touch with to identify trees that have been damaged, that potentially fall? What degree are they, are they going to go ahead and die, or which ones were burned? And I just might add also, we live on Hacienda Road, and then evacuation, we can all, or tagging of any sort. But right now, that's behind us. Right now, I think we have to look to the future. And the trees are an issue, or how does, I'm sure a lot of people are finished with this. You know, what is the resource that can come out and tell us, you have to take that down? If that one's going to live, that one's...
As far as identifying specific trees around your property that need to be removed, there's a number of different choices. You can hire an arborist to come out. Now, I know that that sounds, we're talking about a lot, 71,000 persons essentially to be, to be looked at. There's going to be an enormous string. Right now, as far as life-saving, if you're concerned about a specific tree, grab a firetruck. If you see a firetruck in your neighborhood, ask them. We have, there's a lot of people out there right now. Ask them if it's life-saving. Is this a hazard tree? Does this need to be removed? But in the, in the coming months, we're going to be out there for the Tony Calaveras Unit. We have three outstanding foresters. Reach out to us, that CalFire, we'll be able to try to get somebody out there and take a look. But we're also going to be working very closely with the county in identifying those specific requests that people have, and identifying different sources of information for you. And just for time's sake, I know you have a very specific question, and what I would love to do afterwards, you and I can go talk, I can look at one of the maps. I can't second-guess what the firefighters were doing, it was a very dynamic fire. For those of you that were here, it seems like an eternity ago, it was a Saturday, probably about 10 days ago, I think, that I was here talking about how this fire burned. That first 96 hours of that fire, that's where, that's the majority of this burn basically occurred, was that first 96 hours. So, it's difficult for me to try to second-guess any firefighter forces, but I'd like to talk to you afterwards.
So, I evacuated briefly, get my family out, came back and fought fire in my land for about two days. I asked some questions, because what I saw happen from CalFire while I was there upset me. And I first want to say that I understand that it's a tactical situation, that sometimes some houses have to burn for an overall strategy that saves a town. I also understand that at times it creates people who aren't fit, and somehow I'm interested in that. But I do have some things that I'm having trouble conceptualizing as being something other than negligence. Specifically, back burns. I myself saw once and heard numerous reports from other people, friends that stayed in the burn zone, where the back burns began to start, that caught structures and houses on fire, and these were all just burned to the ground. And then the event that I saw, a fence caught fire in the front yard, and the next door neighbor tried to get attention, he knows a fire crew, was able to do it, and ended up, fireman just bulldozed and put it out himself. At the time, there were five firefighters standing in circles taking selfies about 50 feet away. Another time, there was a neighbor who had a 10,000 gallon tank on his property, his house burned down. And supposedly, I did not confirm this on myself, but there was a log found on it afterwards, as if it had a water source to commenteer. Now, I, you know, I appreciate that, because I know that I've worked hard, but these things that I saw, that made me sleeplessly upset. And I'm wondering, what is the standard of CalFire for back burns and safety structures for commenting water sources? Things like that? Why did these houses catch on fire?
Well, for those specific questions, I'd rather refer to our Operations Section, Chief. I can tell you, the idea of CalFire personnel taking selfies out on the fire line, I'm directly opposed to it, to just put mildly. And firefighters at Tony Calaveras Unit know exactly how I feel when it comes to that. So, I understand that there's a lot of things regarding reception, specific to the backfiring. I'll let Tony Brownell talk about that, but I would like to talk with you afterwards as well. I'm sorry if there's things that we did that caused you any sleepless nights.
Like I said, I'm open to the fact that I just didn't understand, and I would like to hear about it.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's upsetting to hear that. You know, we talk, every briefing we have with our folks, and, you know, in the Operations Section, I have branches that work from the other, then have divisions that work from there, then have the striking division doing it. And we pull people in on these fires, all are the same. And CalFire has a policy that we do not do social media. So, if they do that, they get taken care of, okay, through our process of taking care of the issues. Now, do we have control, every firefighter, what they're doing every step down the line? I wish I did. But with this magnitude, we can't control everything now. As far as backfire goes, it's our, our standard, our operations, any backfire operation goes, has to run to the Operations Section, unless it's a threat to life, or immediately need to do so. So, there were those houses, and they had, they were threatened by fire, they laid down some fire, they tried to save that house, and the foresting there's a bad effect to it. And we don't condone that, but we have to give it some operational longevity to do things like that, to save the house or save their lives. And also, you know, we talked about Hacienda Road, we were talking about the firefighters not engaging down Hacienda Road. There's a couple of things going on. We're focused on certain areas, okay? We're going to try to focus our resources to the limits they were, to save as many houses as we can. And at time basis Maria, when the fire was going through there, we had very large concern about firefighters saving. Because, have you guys driven down? Sure. You seen how it burned? So, we took a hundred-year growth of the fire, of this area here, had burned for a hundred years. So, and then we're going to straighten it out. We're not going to ask the firefighters to trade life in property. We're going to make them focus on where to go. Now, if you have specific issues where you saw some firefighters doing something they weren't supposed to, we want to hear about it. Because we can't fix problems we don't see, okay? Like I said, we don't condone it, and it should have been happening, if it did, we apologize, and we'll take care of it, because we know exactly what it is. That's your question.
And the other question that happens about commenting water sources, some properties that burned down, we don't have...
Obviously, this, this area here is dry, right? And water sources were breathing. So, if they saw a water source they needed to use, and they had to use it, they had to do it. And it's hard for us to know exactly where every water tank goes to, what it flows to, and how it's fed back in. So, they might have a need for, get some water out of somewhere they need to go to put out another house, or save another house. And our main priority is save the life. So, if we go out there and run, put some fire out to save the community, that's what we're going to do. Do you see this area that's kind of, that's all red in the middle? Right? At one point in the fire, we're going to circle our entrances and that whole community, to try to save that whole community. Those firefighters were totally, totally surrounded by firefighters, a while to the point where that one said, they had to get into what we call safety zones, to save themselves. Once the fire calmed down, look that they went back and they saved all the safety they did. So, believe me, don't judge all the firefighters by the actions of a few. And I'm not saying you are, but there was some great firefighting efforts going on here to save every house they could. We did not potentially burn out any house, I can tell you that right now. Okay? That's, that wasn't our priority. Okay?
I'm sorry, I'm turning it over to me from local, and I have four questions, but two of them have been answered. I'll talk to CHP afterwards, and KBGC. Thank you, someone brought up KBGC. My number two question was, we have fire subcontractors in our county, and Hertick was a mile, for example, from a mile where the fire crossed. These subcontractors are on the list, but they don't get called right away, pulling people in from an hour, I have no idea. But what, can you really make an effort to pull the subcontractors that are close to the fire, to get them involved right away? And I think that would have made, that would have made a big difference in the fire. And then, question three that I had, oh, no, don't clap, save your top man. Question three that I had was, we had non-subcontractors, civilians out there fighting fire on their stuff, and a couple of these subcontractors that haven't been called yet are out there on their own, on their own risk. And the story, you know, the legend is that Mount Ranch was saved by a bunch of volunteers out there. They're, they're fighting on the fire lines, what can be incorporated from you guys to get these guys in? We're out of the sticks out here, we don't have the firefighters they have in the valley. We have people protecting their homes. And when they go out to get more diesel fuel, and come back into the CHP stops them, what can you guys do to incorporate these guys into your program better in the future, by fighting fires? So, two questions, two questions. So, let's go back to question number one, and that was specific to...
Local subcontractors.
Local subcontractors. Right. And that's one of the things, Chief Evans and I spoke about it that very morning, and we identified the bulldozers that were local, were on Highway 26, and we were expediting the process. We really tried to do a, there is a process at state government, but there is a process to be able to go through. We expedited, and we got those, those are subcontractors, we started utilizing them by the way. Now, as far as talking about, are we speaking about volunteer firefighters?
No.
In the, or...
About Rancho.
Rancho.
Home.
Well, I'll dive into my closing comments a little early, but, and I'll take, extrapolate a little bit. What I ask is, join the volunteer fire companies. Be a part of organized volunteer, because part of the reason is, there are standards and training that we have to encapsulate. As fire chiefs, we are all responsible for those firefighters that are out there. And so, we want to make sure that they're appropriately, that they have the appropriate personal protective equipment, that they have the training, that they know what they're doing. And by joining the volunteer fire department, they get all of that. They get all of it for free. And then on top of it, we've been hiring our volunteers to go out and work on the safe fire for us. We're working unified, but they're actually getting paid by the state. So, I really, I can't emphasize enough, the need for, if people want to be firefighters, please join. We are constantly recruiting volunteer firefighters. Chiefs, am I right?
If you don't want to be a firefighter, but the difference is to save your property and your home, when you're driving away, and you think your home's burning to the ground, and you got all the people up there taking selfies of the fire, that's very disappointing. That's odd, Indian dog coming up off a huge road. When we pulled out, we thought our house burned to the ground, but it didn't. But when we pulled up, there's everybody set up there taking pictures.
Twelve trucks.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to hear that.
I know you guys did a good job, we're not fidgeting about that, but it's really hard when you pull out and see stuff like that.
It sure is. It disappoints me as well.
Was it CalFire or strike team from the city?
That was CalFire. Those are just up on the hill.
Well, maybe we can talk about words if you remember. If you remember any of the numbers off the close fire injuries, we'll hold them accountable.
Well, you can, if you have any.
I know, I understand, wondering everything's going on. But that's, but that's the example that we have. Okay, we'll talk afterwards. What I'd like to do is, Rolando, if I can, I'd like you all to close the comments, because we were going to stay here and address your personal comments, we would like to have that discussion. First, I would like to recognize Supervisor Debbie Monti. Thank you for showing up, I understand. Thank you. We work very closely with the board of supervisors, with all of the county department heads. Oh. So, there's just not enough, we've already referenced PG&E, but we can't say enough about our partners that we work with throughout the state of California, and as well as partners that came from outside of the state of California. The Forest Service, PG&E, Sierra Pacific Industries, and as I mentioned before, they worked on contingency lines to work up and protect the communities along Highway 4, before they even protected their own land. These dozers worked tandem with our dozers and with our leaders, and they got those contingency lines cut in to protect those communities, and then we went across to the north from Highway 4 to protect their lands secondary. And I think that SBI just did a fantastic job there. We have a mutual aid system that is second to none across the world. When with the California National Mutual Aid, we were able to bring in firefighters from Berkeley, from San Jose, from LA, from San Diego, all over the state. And it was just an incredible response to be able to get those many fire agents on the road and out there helping us. Because honestly, we can't do it alone, and we know that. And to work with all of our local cooperators, we were hand-in-hand with everybody that you see in front of us here, working tirelessly to try to get this out, but we needed those reinforcements to help us out. So, I really appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Incident Management Team One, because I truly believe that they did a fantastic job. This was not an easy fire. This, this was a dynamic, complex fire, and every single day, there were additional things that were constantly being thrown at them, and they handled it with professionalism, efficiency, and effectiveness, so I'd like to thank the team for that. Now, those people that know me know that I'm an eternal optimist, right? I'm just always looking for the shining. But maybe if you don't mistake about it, we are still in the middle of fire season. This is September. This is one fire. We got this one fired out, we are still in the thick of it. And we have to take the learning lessons that we already know, and we're still going to be looking for other learning lessons. But we have to take those learning lessons that we know now. When there's an evacuation order, whether you get it from NICSIL, or from reverse 911, or from your neighbors, please take it. Please just pack up everything and get out. Because I know that there's a number of people that want to stay and protect their structures. This is not the fire season for that. This is a very dynamic year. This fire is burning. This fire burns more rapidly than unlike any other fire that we have in the history of this area. The fires in this area, when they get into those canyons, they want to go up the canyon. This fire wanted to burn from the...
This fire wanted to burn from the north to the south and encountered everything that we knew from fire history. So, understand when we talk about a four-year drought, we have, the fuel oysters are so incredibly dry. The live fuels are dry. You can see it when you look at the trees, they're wilting, they're tired, they don't have that moisture, they are ready to burn. So, please evacuate. Please, when you have an opportunity, when PG&E is out of the area and you're driving through, go up and visit and drive through some of these roads because you'll see some of the homes that survived and what we learn from that is the defensible space really works. It's not 100% and I know, and I understand that and we can argue that. I don't want to cause any argument, but it greatly increases the likelihood of your home surviving is that defensible space. There are a number of homes on the south side of Aces Maria that survived because of the cattle, the horses that they had out there raising it down. We don't have enough fire resources to partner. When a fire is burning this rapid, 50 acres a minute is what we, 50 acres a minute, we can't keep up with that. It outpaces us. The other thing is that, is to volunteer. If you're passionate about something, I ask you, this, this community, I said it before, Calaveras is resilient. We have to build back from this. Hellfire is dedicated to being resilient and helping the community. We all should be looking at how can we chip in and volunteer. Our fire safety councils do an enormous amount of work and though, everybody on those fire safety councils is volunteer. If that's not your cup of tea, look at, if you're into gardening, master gardeners. The Calaveras master gardeners, I hope, will be intimate in working with people to do additional landscaping and helping people landscape their yards in a fire-safe manner. But regardless of what you want to do, there are, there's different ways to volunteer and I hope that everybody reach out and, and help Calaveras heal from this, become more resilient and stronger. I agree with you. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Incident Commander for Incident Management Team One, Phil Penner.
Good evening. My name is Phil. I am the incident commander for Team One and it is my honor and my pleasure to be here tonight to address you. I appreciate the time that you took to come out and listen to us and hear what we have to say. Couple of things about the mute fire. I've been incident commander or deputy incident commander since 2008. Seen a lot of fires. I've had a lot of teams in there. Currently, there are six CAL FIRE incident management teams comprised of about 55 people. And we've been to a lot of fires over the years and I can tell you, this is one of the most technical and most difficult fires I've experienced as an incident commander and as my team has experienced. We, we had a lot to deal, deal with and at one point, there's close to 5,000 emergency workers under my command. It's not counting the law enforcement cooperators, it's not counting PG&E, it's not counting what Red Cross is able to bear, it's not counting what you, your local churches, your local foundations put together to help you evacuate. It's just 5,000 emergency workers out there. We had between 18 and 20 helicopters, had probably at any given time, 10 to 15 large airplanes, hundreds of, 115 bulldozers, hundreds of water tenders, hundreds and hundreds of fire agents out there. Today, there's still 1,800 people out on the line working to defend those homes, to put the perimeter out, to ensure that those islands are in good shape, to get those folks that are, that were repopulated back in to save homes. And so, again, as the chief said, if you see smoke out there, if you see people out there, if you're back in the homes, please call one of my firefighters and talk to them. Can't see a firefighter, if you need assistance, call 911, ask for assistance. The 12 Calaveras unit, the Alvarado unit, CAL FIRE, your local firefighters are here to help you and will be here for a long time. Will be here until the rains come, until the snows fall. We're not going to leave you guys alone. The final thing I'd like to say to you is that I've got a lot of my firefighters in my team who came and helped me, firefighters here, police department, they've been out, they've been out working. It's been a very busy summer. I can assure you that everybody's been working up and down the state. I've been on duty now for several weeks. I've got firefighters who've been on duty for, for two months, two months plus. Been able to get home and not have a day off. It's just been such an unprecedented year of drought, or last four years of drought. But the support that you, the community has given to my firefighters does help them, does lift them up. The parade down 49 the other day, my firefighters going to work, firefighters going back to work. Old guys coming in saying that's the first time they've ever had that.